All stands, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
May I appoint an order? Point of order?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Um, according to the charter, a call meeting cannot be called unless a mayor calls and has a written request of two council people. And do you have those?
I do not.
To show you my good spot, I'm gonna withdraw that. But you're all supposed to have to request the two council people.
I have not ever heard that.
It's in the charter.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Okay, I'm withdrawing that. Now, that's one spot gone, okay?
That's one spot gone. Thank you, dear.
We have a project, Joe.
Yeah.
I think it's so funny.
There'll be spots on this one here.
Uh, we have established decorum. We have a full house. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of October the second is in your packet.
Like a motion, they do accept it or written?
Or to accept it or written, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion or additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, this is set, please signify by raised hand, unanimous. The, we talked about the new city attorney, our town attorney, but we need to, we need to make it formal. Now, Drew Whalen has handled three, or is handling three separate issues for us. The first one was concluded to our satisfaction. He's working on, uh, and the second one was concluded to our satisfaction, uh, being the water contract. And now he's still working on a sidewalk contract or agreement, uh, with that party. So he is well versed in handling small towns. He handles several local, uh, small towns around here, including, um, Sonoita. So, uh, I would ask for a motion that we use Mr. Drew Whalen and his fee is going to be $200 an hour, which is less than we've paid in a long time. Uh, the old attorney has been notified in writing and, uh, they are in full agreement and everything is fine there. Uh, I would like a motion to accept Drew Whalen as our new city attorney to be used as needed.
Like a motion that we accept, Drew.
Motion to accept.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, when does this become effective? Immediately?
Immediately, yes, ma'am.
Just a question, would David just retire or something?
No. Uh, uh, David kinda hinted to me when we were trying to finish up the water contract with Dearing, and he didn't hear, he, he let it be known that he had been dealing with that thing for a long time and he just rather, I get somebody down here local behind it. And I found out that he has been given, he was trying to gear his operation down. Then all of a sudden, they gave him a big, uh, hospital down in South Georgia and a big client in North Georgia. So he's spending time on the road now. And definitely he didn't want that, but that's what he's got. But he was in full agreement and, uh, I had taken up on his hint.
Okay.
Can I ask, uh, is there any chance of considering having the attorney present at our meetings? All of those towns, small and large, have this attorney present and our legal bills have decreased a good bit in the last year and it seems that it would be a good idea. They tend to come up from time to time that I'm sure you have to get on the phone after the meeting and ask them about. I just think it's a good practice to have somebody in. It's only once a month.
Only once a month, but when we only need him once a every blue moon and to pay him $200 an hour from time he leaves to the time he gets back, plus the time here, that's close to a thousand dollars.
Where does he live?
He lives in Griffin. But, uh, I would say that once our budget is to a point where that wouldn't be such a burden, I would be all for it. It would certainly take some burden off the council to get things exactly right and like you said, to keep them having to, uh, as we will, one thing here tonight, uh, go to him after the meeting and then come back to council. But that's an awfully big expense.
But it must be a need or everybody else wouldn't be doing it. And don't ask me if I would jump off the roof with everybody, that thing, but if everybody else is doing it, there's got to be a reason.
You know, the biggest reason they do it, because it's always been done.
So we set an precedent.
Yeah, even some of your larger towns, uh, they're not using a full, a lawyer full time, it's, they, they just can't handle the expense. Uh, at best, that would be...
I would have to see the need come up much more than it does for me to go justify spending our money for something like that.
But there are things that may go by that aren't noticed because I've seen in other council meetings where it's in the process of the meeting, the attorney will intercede and see something that's not quite called him the, oh, and, and stop him. Uh, I've seen it in Moon and Watson, I've seen it in Touring lots. But anyway, that's another day perhaps.
Uh, yes, I, and I would love to have it, I, I really would, uh, but it's just, um, expensive, we can't afford right now. Do you have a comment, sir?
Oh, I guess a comment, oh, would it make sense to maybe have the guy in as needed? You know, if you solve, like, this would be one of those meetings where maybe we need an attorney?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that we, we would do.
We do that if we know in advance that there's gonna be a need, but sometimes we just have no clue when that comes up.
Right. But like, if I see in the agenda, uh, if I see that there's something that I have a question on, I'm gonna call him in advance anyway, uh, to get to legal. Now, tonight, uh, in part of it, uh, agenda, uh, we're going to have to make some suggestions and changes or whatever might come up and then present him with the entire agreement and, uh, let him put it in legal these terms.
Well, right since you mentioned that, that was, and I can't mention that at this point, but then I need to bring it up when we go into executive session because there's something, right exactly what you said that I needed to ask you.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. Was there a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by raised hand, please, unanimous. At this point, I have been asked very nicely if I would get up and leave the meeting, that y'all have something to discuss that, and I will turn it over to our mayor pro temp stand and, uh, if you would, I'm gonna go into office and just call me if you want me to come back. You don't wanna fire me or...
Stay on status. Stanley wouldn't do that. Get out the job then.
Yeah, right then, you can be...
It was the pleasure of counsel for dedication of the town park. Any suggestions?
What do you mean the dedication? You mean the whole program or what in particular?
I'm just going by what's written, so I don't know.
Sir?
I'm just going by what's written, Dan. I don't know, it says dedication of Park Town Park.
Well, I think...
So what's been going on?
I think the suggestion was that 26, having a ribbon cutting and somebody standing up and explaining what had transpired, how we got the park, the mayor's vision.
Seven twenty-six, is that Saturday?
I think it's, uh, Saturday, yeah. And, uh, the Chamber of Commerce has offered to come down and, you know, help us with the ribbon and the big scissors and to make it official and, and at that time, we'd like to name the park and, uh, it has been suggested, uh, the Staley Park and I think that's a wonderful idea because y'all remember what it used to look like with the old tennis courts out there and then all the work that Wendell's put into purchasing the extra land and doing the land swap to have the parking behind it. The things that he's done to save money has just been unbelievable. That, that park should've cost us three times what it did if, if we'd operated like a normal government, but he has pinched pennies, he has reused materials, he has shopped on the internet for facilities and we got part built with very little money. And we had to schedule the way that we budgeted because we didn't have the money up front and we would plan things and just, you know, move along as we got money. So that's my suggestion that we, we name it the Wendell Staley Park or Staley Park or whatever council, you know, we, we discuss and come up with.
Any other discussion?
I guess I could ask that, that we named, since we've got the three, the buildings and several things that we called, this is gonna sound brandy us, Staley, I mean, um, Sharpsburg Municipal Complex, but they're everything. And then as we add to it, if we had a ball field aid or whatever, we would have the whole thing as that. And then name each little thing something separate, the Staley Pavilion or whatever that thing, Park or whatever. And I would suggest going back to the, to put the bridges back on this building as it was originally and then name any other section if you have another section. With, um, Sharpsburg Municipal Complex, even though it sounds a little bit big now, as we grow, uh, we have property and some ideas and some others, we would have a place to grow and have add names and recognize a lot of people.
Who are you, Rick, suggesting naming it?
Sharpsburg Municipal Complex for the entire thing. And then they, it's the Staley Park Pavilion, what, what is, what you said?
I was just gonna say the Staley Park.
Park and the building, this building to go back to the bridges as it used to be and then even name the playground for somebody for that now, uh, that way and down the road, we've talked about it from time to time, having a place for the Sharpsburg Stallions to come back, that way we could have it and then name that for something. You see what I'm saying? And that way you can spread the recognition.
But I have no problem with naming this Sharpsburg Complex or whatever. You know my answer because I think you and I did some emailing, trying to figure out what, how to do this. And right now, this building has a name.
But it used to have another name and you don't wanna go.
It can go back to any name it used to be, but it originally had a name because that's what this was, it was new construction at the time. So it was named for a, a family back then. This out here is completely new construction. Uh, it wasn't, well, we demolished an old dilapidated tennis court that no one used anymore and was just an eyesore. And now this is all new construction, a totally different type. And I think that should bear Wendell's name because he looked out there and saw this dilapidated thing that was just costing the town money that no one wants to use.
I'm not arguing with that, I'm saying name the whole thing and then name the parts, but I think this needs to go back to...
But we're talking about having a ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate the opening of the new park, so the new park needs to have a name on it. And then the whole thing can be called whatever we choose to and we can take up renaming this or changing the name or, or something else. The whole thing will be a complex and like you said, we hope to keep this going and making the whole town better and adding more features to the town.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion then that we name the whole thing Sharpsburg Municipal Complex. Park, I'm, I'm saying park, um, Staley Park and Bridges Record, Bridges here.
I don't know about the Bridges Park because I don't remember the original name, it was just...
It was, it had O Bridges.
It was A?
A and O Bridges.
It was A and O Bridges Community Center?
Recreation.
Recreation? I have no problem with that. That was just dropped off, I remember when they were looking at the sign because there are few people that tell you what A and O stands for outside of me and Joe maybe and...
They knew what the Bridges stood for though?
Yeah.
Because they've been here forever.
Yeah.
How long with the colors?
My granddaddy.
I think long with the colors.
Uh, but, but anyway, the reason when they put that sign up there, it was like, well, if you say, let's go to the A and O Recreation Center, people go, is it Carrollton and it's the, you know, far end of Cuyahoga County? So that's why they said, well, let's make it Sharpsburg Community Center and everybody knows where you're talking about nowadays. That was why it was changed and that was left off. If, you know, we take that part up and rename it as, everybody thinks that's the thing. But right now, I think what we're talking about is having the grand opening of the new facility and you would like to have a name to get it as its opening and that's kind of what we're doing, but today is my understanding.
They just looking at naming the park and then the...
This is just, this is just for that celebration and the opening and the ribbon cutting and all the people that contributed because Cuyahoga County, I used to kind of put heads with them, but Lord, they were so good to us. They helped in every way, anything we needed or help or any equipment they could supply or manpower or that would still be a pile of rocks out there if it weren't problem. And that's what we wanna do with this thing is recognize all these people that helped make this thing possible. And so that's what this, this is about, is recognizing the park and the people that made it possible. And one of them was Wendell's vision and then all the people that put the things in place to make it actually become to fruition.
Yes, sir. I just want to comment because the, uh, the municipal complex is great from a marketing standpoint and then if you had each of these areas named, you know, A and O Bridges and the park as a stadium or whatever, whatever, as, and as it grows, then if somebody actually rents this facility or that, say it's a Sharpsburg Municipal Complex and the A and O Bridges, uh, building or at the Staley, at Staley Park, then they know what they're buying, you know, some, from a marketing standpoint, it's very clear, this is the whole complex and your deal will be held in this building or that park or this baseball field or whatever.
And that's how, and that's how the things are handled right now as far as, uh, people making use of them, you know, you rent this place if that's what you need or that place that was...
But you see what's before us now is we don't have a name for the park at all.
Yeah.
So we, the, right now, what we're wanting to discuss is the ribbon coating ceremony and the naming of the park.
Right.
Now, the municipal complex, I'm, I'm, I think we're probably all good with that. And right now, when they call and rent the building, you know, they say that, we rent the building. But, uh, the, the municipal complex is in the discussion. Now, we wanna open the park officially.
That's why, we having a discussion.
Guy sitting in the audience, I'm not clear on all that.
No, you, that's, that's exactly right. We could call the whole thing, the municipal complex, but we just wanna name the park and open it.
Well, they weren't even... Bring up a pile of say, let's have a motion on naming the park, not necessarily with the name, but to get the process going and name of the park. So we're saying, then we can discuss it further.
I thought we made a motion.
You did?
Yeah.
No, you made a motion.
No, I made a motion, I didn't, I didn't want you to like, but I made a motion.
You made a motion about naming this the Sharpsburg Municipal Complex.
It was still a motion about the, the whole thing.
Okay.
Well, the motion is...
Yeah, well, I don't wanna see that go away.
But then, is there a second?
That's the way to get rid of it, because they won't be. See? It worked.
Hearing none.
And for your information, the reason I didn't second it is that wasn't why I thought I was coming here tonight to name this whole place, but rather to handle a ribbon, a ceremony for people and to name this one new section.
Well, the best of both worlds in my opinion is Polly's idea of naming this Sharpsburg Municipal Complex, but we name that Wendell Staley or Staley Park at Sharpsburg Municipal Complex.
That, second, I second that.
So, so we're...
Does that make sense?
I second that.
So we just expand and make these...
Name this whole complex.
Motion, Sharpsburg.
And I had no problem with that, any sort of thing I said.
But Russ, the suggestion I have, do you wanna name it Wendell Staley Park or Staley Park? Which would sound better?
One name.
Yes, but the Staley Park?
Okay. So, I can't help...
What are you talking?
Tell what we're...
Now, we need a motion.
I have no problem with...
You made, I made the motion, you made the motion and I seconded it.
I have no problem with that.
Oh, I was just making the suggestion.
With the idea for...
All right, that's an informal motion then.
I second it.
Wait a minute.
What was the motion?
Name the whole complex, Sharpsburg Municipal Complex, but you call it Staley Park at Sharpsburg Municipal Complex. That way you get the best of the world.
It's over the second, we in discussing that.
Now we can discuss it legally, I guess, properly.
Okay.
Don't pick the good one to come. No, it's not this interesting.
So, but we do need a name going forward, we gonna have that dedication on the 26th?
Cause they're gonna show up here not to do this whole place.
It's just for the park.
Cause they did not contribute, all the people that's coming to this ribbon coating didn't contribute necessarily to the older stuff.
Is the town not invited too?
Yes.
Everybody's invited.
So then why are we being picky about who contributed?
Cause if you didn't put a shovel in the ground and help, then you, you might've been for it, but you weren't one of the ones that need to be thanked for making it happen. And that's what the ribbon cutting ceremony was about, it's not just to look good, it's to thank the people that made it actually happen. So... By saying it the way it's put out there now, when, when people show up for this ribbon cutting ceremony, what are they gonna be cutting? The Sharpsburg Complex opening or are they gonna be doing the Staley Park opening?
They could be doing what he said, the Staley Pavilion at the Sharpsburg Municipal Complex.
And we say Staley Pavilion or Staley Park.
Staley Park.
Or that.
Staley Park, okay.
At the Sharpsburg?
I mean, we can rename this, you know, that's no big deal. You know, we just need a name for the park, for the dedication.
Okay.
So...
But we gotta take care of her motion first, which is she wants...
No, it was his motion, I seconded it.
I said we gonna call this...
You already came up with municipal something, I thought that was a motion.
Nobody's seconding it. It died for lack of a second.
So now we're where?
I recommended we call it Staley Park at Sharpsburg Municipal Complex. Any more discussion on the issue? If we're going too fast, because I can't write that fast, do you?
She had a recorder, don't make a...
Be with it.
I'm blessed, y'all look at...
Any other discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by raised hand, unanimous, motion carried.
Tell her we used to keep the job.
That's all right. Polly's got a recorder and she played it out.
Yeah, I need y'all to come, yeah, come on. I'm not sure we gonna keep it. I hope she's doing it. I don't see a light on. Is it working?
All right, Mr. Mayor, tracking your call.
Okay, thank you. When the agenda is in the old business that we need to discuss. Hearing none, we'll ask for public comments. To my left, your right.
He's not listening.
He's not listening.
I'm listening. No, I'll be honest.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, is there something that you would like to say you could stand up and address council if you're right?
That's you.
Yeah, I know.
Just happy to be here, aren't you?
Yeah.
All right.
I think it's all good, that's my comment.
Um, good, thank you. Camera lady?
No, miss there.
Well, what about an, what about an opinion of the playground? What are you thinking? How's it coming?
It's coming pretty good.
Uh-huh. What do we still need to do?
I think that y'all should paint the inside of the house, make it more look realistic.
You haven't been there recently then.
What'd you say, lady?
She said the inside of the house needs to be.
Yeah, see you...
You need to go look.
And we, we did it. Not only that, I want you to go down and see the big concrete pipes they're sitting on, they've been painted also.
Yeah, we, I saw that, yeah, we went down there.
They finished today though, they got them all three now.
Is the paint dry?
Ma'am?
Is the paint dry?
You better touch it before you run through it.
No. Uh, any other public comments? Call of council, starting clay?
About the name.
Now, the fire hips got taken care of great, uh, no, one inside when I went down there the other day.
Yeah, now we've turned, also turned the fire and problem over to the landscapers because we had them all in the yard out there also in the, in the park and they're gonna spray them on a regular basis. Even Mr. Bobby next door was up there spraying the ones down. They're everywhere, they're terrible.
Especially after a rain.
Yeah.
They just pop up.
Yeah. We're glad to see you back.
Thank you.
Uh, any comments?
Yeah, why don't y'all stick me with the minutes? Cause you have the best...
Cause I can't, I can't spare.
I, I'm trying to do the convinced version, but I'll try my best. No, I just, uh, I got to come home Labor Day and I went down to the park and was just looking around and I was real pleased at the progress that had been made to the children's playground and a couple pulled up with their children while I was there. I got out and talked to them and it kinda shocked them and I, I told them why I was asking, but they just brought their children to play on the playground. I don't even know where they lived, but they had driven by and seen it and, and really liked it and I showed them where the fans and everything was under the pavilion so they could sit there while their children played. But it, it was so nice to see somebody notice what we had done and wanted to use it.
Oh, good to see it used.
But no, I, I don't have any comments.
Good, that was a good comment.
Uh, you know, lady had contacted me and we had done, put the speed on the sign back up there on 154 to 35, you know, it's come down as 45, 35, said, you know, they hadn't done any good. She hadn't, I mean, it's, it's my driveway, it's like Indy 500 out there. And I just wondered if we could somehow maybe get the sheriff's office come and fall down a little bit.
We've contacted them on several occasions and even of late and we have seen a little more presence, but they're not getting where we've asked them to go, which is Terrantane 154, from the high school all the way through. And we've told them about it and unfortunately, they spend a lot of their time up at the church.
I don't think the cemetery is going anywhere.
Oh, well, they gotta have these conferences, you know, but, um, I'll call the sheriff again and see if I can't get through to it. Yeah, I think you would volunteer your driveway and I think...
I volunteer mine.
I would mine.
You would yours? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just saying, the name that I think would be the best for the park is the Sharpsburg Park. I'm just saying and I noticed the library like houses out there.
Everything with books, yeah.
Yeah. I know some of the Dickies, but I'll see if I can contact them, see if I can...
Yeah, do that.
Get something going because...
That's probably would do more good than trying to go through channels because they got the prerogative to go for it pretty well like they want.
Well, I know, that nice and he's the SRO, but he's Calway, I can contact him and see if you can get the boat.
Are they free to sit into, in a private driveway?
Yep.
Oh, they can, I didn't know that.
Yeah. And I've told them they can sit in mine as long as they want to, uh, cause when they leave that traffic light going east, by the time they get to my house, it's 55, 60, 70 miles an hour.
Yeah.
In a day's time, they could probably make enough revenue for pay taxes for the year.
Yeah.
And noise is an issue too when they're doing all that, taking on particularly motorcycles.
Oh, good, good. But you make the contact, I'll call the sheriff again and see if we can't get something done. Clerk's not here to make any comments. Mayor's comments, I think he just mentioned that the mini library is up, uh, and Margaret has got approximately 25 books already assigned to that and she'll have the rest of them up very shortly. We may have to buy, buy some books, especially children's books, but, uh, we'll have that thing stopped. Uh, one thing we're going to do is to be sure that it didn't leak and all that rain we had the other day didn't leak a drop. So if it was gonna leak ever, I think it would've leaked then. You already talked about the playground and what progress has been made there. Earlier today, a few minutes ago, an hour or so ago, I went over to Home Depot and picked up the stain, the finished stain in the children's swing, the adult swing, um, the ramp going to the monkey bars and a couple other things, uh, including the, uh, mini library. Uh, so we'll have that done probably as early as tomorrow. So we'll have that done probably as early as tomorrow. Talking about being used, I came down here Saturday and there was a family reunion going on here from one of our regulars that rents every year. They had, the playground was full of kids. There were people sitting in the swing, adults sitting in the swing. There were people sitting under the pavilion. Everything was being used all at one time. It made me feel good to see that it was being used like that. Anything else to come before the general counsel tonight? Hearing none, I need...
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, Wendell, I'm sorry. The Patriot Frog Valley is still up. What's happened with that? There are people that haven't complied with the sign thing.
Okay. Call her again tomorrow or gotta go take the sign down one day or...
It's about time they closed anyway.
About a month.
San Noah's got the cutest little building built around a little portable thing like that, Wendell.
Yeah.
San Noah's got a little, you know, they got one of those little portable deals like that that looks like a carnival truck. San Noah's got a little building of sorts built around it that's really attractive. It would make that look a whole lot better than it does.
Where is it, I'd like to see it.
I'll take a picture and send it to you, how about that?
That does raise one more thing that I have when you mentioned San Noah. Couple of you have mentioned what's been in the paper about San Noah and the new sewer treatment plant. Of course, I've been in touch with their mayor Larry and we sat in on some sessions in Savannah together about the sewer plant. And that's when the, that's where we originated the idea or the reason that came to me about making it a regional. And since they had already been turned down a couple of times, that that might make it easier for it to go through. And apparently it did because it has passed and we can down the road participate in that sewer plant. Because they've got the permit as a regional, we have to be involved. Now, how much it's gonna cost us to get involved would be something else, we'll have to discuss.
They hinted something nice about whether they go forward with that development because the development was gonna supply them with the land that they were gonna plan on using for the sewage treatment plant. So tonight, we'll decide whether that stops or keeps going forward.
Right, and if that doesn't go forward, they still want to continue to look for a piece of property to put that plan on.
Okay.
So it's not gonna die if this developer didn't go through. At this point, I need a motion to go into executive session for a matter that we need to discuss concerning... Concerning employers. So at this point, I need a motion to that effect.
Okay.
As a motion, this is a second.
Second.
Motion is a second. All in favor, if you take a decision at this time, please signify by raise hand, unanimous. Now, what this means is we're going to have to leave the public, go into a meeting and that will be the last thing on the agenda. So if you want to wait until we come out, but all we'll do when we come out is adjourn the meeting. So you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but it has to be done behind closed doors discussing matters.
Can I ask a question before we go in? So when we go in, this is the first one, I'll wait this second, I'll be in. We go into the executive session and have our discussion, whatever it is. We come back and there will be no decision made at that point.
If there is a decision made in there.
Yeah.
It needs to come before council. It will come back and be a motion to that effect, you're on the floor. It can't be made in there.
Well, I know that, but you checked, it sounded like when you said that, that nothing else would happen tonight, but there's a possibility there will be more meeting.
There is a possibility.
I thought so, okay.
Yeah.
So there will be something else happening.
Good to see y'all.
Thanks for coming. Hey, come by when you get a chance.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right.
Good to see you, man.
See you later.
All right, bye-bye.
Shelby cut that off, sweetie, and we'll turn it back on when you come back.